It being seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's good to see lost smiling faces and sure appreciate his patience. If we could be here with a roll call, please. Councilor Long here. Councilor Combs?
Here.
Councilor Hires?
Here.
Councilor Ratliff?
Here.
If you would please stand. The invitation this evening is Mr. Darryl Christopher from the First Christian Church.
Let us pray. God of mercy and love, we thank you for the many and abundant blessings you give us. God, we thank you for life itself, for the measure of health. We need to fulfill our callings and for sustenance and for friendship. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. God, we thank you for the freedom we have been given. We thank you for loving us even though we're not always worthy of your love and we thank you for your boundless and endless love. I pray for our mayor and our assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. I pray that they have a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting. I pray that they have the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. God, I pray for personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. God, I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our city. These things I pray in the name above all names. Amen.
If you would join me with pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So public comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals be limited to three-minute speaking time. Cue the total of all comments from the public should not exceed 15 minutes. Preference will be given to Talalaw residents and in compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meetings Act, no action or discussions permitted by the city council on any issue or topic raised by speaker during the public comment period. Is there anyone who would like to address the council? If you would come to the podium and tell us your name.
Peggy Ginn. Hi, I'm having a problem with flooding from a city drainage ditch which is located directly across the street from my property. I bought the property two years ago and I noticed that I was having trouble with the flooding there, so I started calling the city. And every time there's a heavy rain, which is kind of normal to me because I've been living here for two years now and that's all I've ever seen. So every time there's a heavy rain, the drainage ditch fills up and overflows across it. It's located across the street from my property. It overflows, it runs down my driveway. My laundry room is at the end of my carport. The water seeps into my laundry room and my hot water tank is located in my laundry room, so I'm a little concerned about my hot water tank getting flooded. The city has replaced the tin horn, which, you know, I appreciate that, but it didn't alleviate the problem. At my request, they brought out sandbags and they bagged up the side of the street there and that did help, but with the heavy rain, it still overflows. My property has its own drainage problem and I'm aware that it's my problem to repair, but I can't get started with that until the flooding problem across the street is fixed. My property becomes overloaded with water, extra water, a lot of extra water from the drainage ditch, so I'm having to deal with that. I have a little creek that runs down my driveway around my house and to the back. Also replaced a new central heat and air unit. And with the last rain, I had a swimming pool on the side of my house because it was flooding this side of my house and this side of my house. So the city has really been trying to fix the problem. Every time I call Buddy, Buddy listens to me and he'll come out and, you know, he'll clean out the drainage ditch of all the leaves and the garbage that collects there, but that's not really fixing the problem. If they would have, I've watched this drainage ditch for two years now, so if they would have just asked me, I could have told them it needs a little border there, you know, a curb. Just put a curb up there and that will hold back some, most of the water. So I'm here just asking and looking for a permanent solution to the city's ditch drainage problem across from my property. So.
Would you mind, what's your address?
900 East Shawnee Street. And it's, in my opinion, it's an old neighborhood and it has, the streets are bad and, you know, it's not the best-looking neighborhood in that part of the city, but I like to live in there. I bought the property and I would just like a permanent solution to the flooding problem so I don't have to get stressed out every time it rains. And I mean, it rains. I've never seen so much rain in my entire life. So, thank you.
Dr. Isa?
I want to present with the council again, this is none of the agenda, but I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you. This is the Talalaw Hospital Authority Trustees Report. And what I'm reflecting here is the items regarding the meeting that they had in January. My primary concern is the concept Agenda items, which includes all the financial statements that are not included. Everyone agrees to agree that the financial statements are there and agreeable and there's questions that are, unfortunately, most people don't have any background in training in accounting for finding, so they're, it's something they may not agree or understand. And the other thing I'd like to bring your attention to too is the new CFO that they have, okay? And well, here's Mr. Wagner. Again, he's a CPA that's not licensed at Oklahoma and he doesn't have a permit to practice. And he's not had a permit to practice for a number of years. When I pull up the audit report, this is what I'd like you to be thinking about when you go back and read it if you have the opportunity. These are management's financial reports and this person is part of management. He was the lead auditor for Heidi Bailey. They hired him as a CPA during the audit process where he's still an employee. This really concerns me because you basically ethically can audit, you lead partner, okay? So if you go into these financial statements, certainly they're very informative, but not very productive because usually what they'll do is have patient income plug in other income to have a positive number. You should have patient income, patient expenses and net. If you go back and look at the numbers, you'll see they won't be positive, they'll be materially negative. What I'm concerned about, I do not want us to be like stapler or tag, you know, regarding suddenness before this council, but what the hospital might have concerns about liquidation and stuff like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Isa. Would anyone else like to address the council? Stephen? We'll move on to the consent agenda. The items placed on the consent agenda, so members of the city council by unanimous consent, and then make certain items to be approved by one motion. Any items proposed on consent agenda, meeting with the approval of all council members, will be removed and heard in regular session.
Mayor, I'd like to remove item B, please.
Okay, item B, request to remove. Do we have any motion for acceptance of other items? Tell me.
Second.
Roll call. Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Announcements and presentations. We have one employee to recognize this evening, Jimmy Fort, 15 years retired department. Is Jimmy with us?
He's not, and we have to pick him up and see his regrets.
Thank you very much. Tell him, please, that we appreciate his years of service.
He's in the livestock show somewhere with his kid.
That's probably more important at this point. Do we have a report from the library?
I'm not going to the library. Hello. Please ask me. Okay, I'm asking her to help me so that I can go speedily along here. Because we haven't had a big change with the library system. It's changed its name by dropping the word district out of it, so that the library name now is simply Eastern Oklahoma Library System. So what my kind assistant is handing out to you is something that shows the new logo and the name of what it is now. We also have not only the new logo, but we have a new website, so, which is EOLS dot org. So hopefully you'll enjoy those things as a, not only the pen, but a card holder for you, just shows the new. Another change that we are making as of March 1st is that all 15 libraries in the Eastern Oklahoma Library System will be fine-free. You know, for years, as you all know, libraries have that reputation for having overdue fines and for years we've had overdue fines on not everything, but simply on things like DVDs, video games, when you would check out like something like a hotspot or something like that, the launchpads. But now that is changing and there will no longer be overdue fines. There will still be the fees for if you would lose something because we have to have that helping, replacing items, but if, you know, if something's lost and comes back and it's still in good condition, then there would, you know, we would waive that fine. Several libraries across the country have made this change, going with, you know, losing out, losing the overdos because that just isn't really working that much. And, but our library system's the first one in Oklahoma to do that, so we're hopefully forward-thinking there. I want to tell you all about a few things coming up that may be of interest to you. We will be having an adult program on the 13th at 6:00. It's a couples trivia game night, so we have to have, you know, teams of two signing up for it and it would be a fun evening, just relaxation for people. Then on the 19th, that Wednesday at 2:00, we have another program where we'll be, that will be presented, it will be about American Indians that were in World War II. Of course, you know, we're very familiar with the thing about Navajo Cope Talkers, but this, we'll cover something about that, but also we'll cover some of the stories of some of the ones that aren't that familiar to us. And also, because I know you'll all have, if not yourself, that someone in your life that may find this of help, we're partnering with the Oklahoma Healthy Aging Initiative to present a program on healthy mind, healthy brain, and it will be in March. I need to tell you now about it because it will be starting March the 2nd, going through the 23rd. It'll be Monday mornings at 9:30 and it's all about helping people work out techniques that might help keep them healthy. You know, the brains and the mental health is so important, as we know, that that's just variety of the things we have to learn. Do you all have any questions?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And thank you for the gifts. Report from the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Clint, for having me cover there. Council members, thank you for that pass. So this is our February, not really January update, being made in February. Our first screen is that we have 360 members. We felt a change, so we have 306 businesses and 54 individual membership. Recently, our new member, past week or two, is having a heart attack throwing, so welcome to them. I practiced that for about two hours today. Didn't make sure I said that right. So we're so pleased with Anna Davis and her partner in opening that, entertainment for our people. And then we had 35 business member renewals this past month. And our Chamber news, Legislative Focus, there are dates up there. February 14th will be our first one. Just a reminder, we have moved that to a luncheon versus breakfast. It will be 11:30. Our location has been confirmed at Gohee Village for the 14th. Our sponsor is Bank of Cherokee County. And then all of our dates will be the second Friday at 11:30. And so there's more information on our site. State of the Community is scheduled for March 26th. Mayor, you will be part of our team presenting for, about the community in 11:30 a.m. You'll be at the NSU Ballroom. Tickets, individual tickets are $25. There are sponsorship levels and then tickets available online at talachaw chamber dot com. Also on the 14th at 8:00 a.m. will be our monthly AM Live, which is our networking event. Coffee and conversation equals connections. So we invite any, with any business member to join us and be a partner in greeting and meeting new people at that event. And that will be at the Thompson House, so we're very excited to be over there and be entertained. And then of course, Census 2020 is still ongoing. Many partners in the community are working to promote Census 2020 and the importance of, you know, getting the count and getting more money for our community, correct? A couple of other things that we will be doing in February, our board will be coming together to do the long-range strategic plan for the chamber. And then we also just posted today that our board election process is up and going, so you may go to talachaw chamber dot com, should be on the front screen, click on information on how to nominate someone or to also just ask and to nominate yourself and we will make sure you get an application or you can access it from there. And those applications and nominations will be due by March 3rd and then the process takes about two months to go through with interviews and visiting with people to, as to their structure of what they want to see done. And then I will just also mention, final plans are being made. We will be doing a rollout of the Economic Development Plan on February 24th and there will be more information shared at the next city council meeting, just so that everyone's aware of that information. But Jim Fram, who is our consultant, I'm sorry, I just went blank on his company name, will be joining us and making that presentation to the public, so public is invited to attend and more information is forthcoming on that event. Thank you, and now tourism up league.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Clinton. Oh, first of all.
I'm not 100% sure how to do slides.
I could just kind of go over it verbally and then send the report, but you, Stephen, you asked, Councilman Hires, you asked about the lake fees and so on. We've actually sent a petition to Larry Winchester and I will be at the State Capitol on Wednesday discussing that. Right now it's been tabled and it's just kind of continuously been tabled. Right now, from what I'm understanding, they don't really see anything happening with that, but we are fighting them for Ten Killer State Park especially.
Let us know if there's anything we can do to help.
That'd be great. And also, we always have updates at our tourism council meeting too on that. So thank you, Clint, for looking through the next slide. Okay, so these numbers, first of all, will look kind of negative, but there's a really positive part at the end of this. For December, because we still don't receive the note or the numbers from Janie right yet, from travelok.com, we had 366 visitor guides distributed totally through travelok.com. The comparison from November to December, you can see that like for the outdoor camping kit, it was 274 in November, 182 in December and so on. You can kind of see those numbers in there. The request came from the, I can't see this, the Discover Oklahoma, which, and then also the e-newsletter through print advertising, radio, search engines, social media and so on, and those numbers are a little bit down. So when you look at that, at first one, I thought I kind of took a breath because I thought, oh my gosh. But when you go to the next slide, Clint, you will see that we're actually the third most requested city in the state of Oklahoma for the month of December. And so to me, that was really great. Talalaw was included in the top 12 requested kit packages and those are all listed on there as well. And I'm so old, I cannot see that far over there, so I'll let me just do it like this. That was really encouraging to me to see that we were that highly requested. The only cities that were higher than us in our quest numbers were Shawnee enough on the city. So when I saw that, then I exhaled and I felt a little bit better. But I guess people probably in the month of December weren't traveling as much and so on. On the Cherokee Heritage Center brochure request, it was 249 for the month of December and Cherokee Nation Tourism was 251. And so when you receive those brochures, Talalaw's also included in that. Another thing was the top kits that were in that, we were actually included in the top 12 requested kits and that's fall foliage, family activities, motorcycles, museums, outdoor camping and so on. So, okay, Clint, you can move on to the next one. Two of the top campaigns that we started doing are hiking, fishing, well, hiking, fishing, exploring, videos and maps. That's kind of all encompassing as one campaign. The next campaign that we're doing is the historical campaign and that includes videos, interviews, maps, and there's also going to be QR codes listed in that. So it will be really cool, when you go to one of those houses, you'll have a QR code and you can go directly to the interview and kind of get live interaction going with that, so that's really exciting for us. The QR code will actually be in a brochure that's coming up for that. And one of the reasons why we're doing that is because we've had a huge request, especially for the hiking this time of the year, maybe it's because people think there's not snakes out, I don't know what that's about, but we have tons of people calling in and asking for hiking maps too and where we could go, so we're doing some videos and if you guys get on our website or on our Facebook, there's some great videos of hiking over by the bathtub rocks, which is great. And the historical campaign, one of the reasons why I'm doing that is because we had so many people come in last year and wanted a map of the historical homes and more information about each individual home. And so I thought, why don't we just put together a map with some more interaction and that's where the QR code idea came from. This was also something that I felt was important and it kind of had some backing to it. When I did some research, the top trends were for traveling for 2020 are Instagram opportunities, micro trips and central tourism, wellness tourism, transformational tourism, slow travel, which just means instead of rushing to the Caribbean and coming back exhausted, they want to take closer trips within a shorter demographic area, so that it's more of a relaxation vacation, and solo travel, which 70%, 73% of people that are solo traveling are women. So we're kind of catering to that a little bit with our campaigns this quarter. Now, this was super exciting to me. Our website is up, our users are up, our sessions are up, our bounce rate is down, which is great. We've increased by 60% for our direct search and I, those numbers are really great, I'm really happy to see those. And at the very end, hiding it, Ten Killer. We are scheduled for March 27th and 28th, so mark all your calendars, call your friends, your family and your neighbors and get ready to clean up the lake. Any questions? No?
Talalaw Lane Street isn't here this evening. Billups, destructions, again? Any city departments with a report? Then discussion of possible action on items removed from the consent agenda.
Yeah, in our packets on this check register, check number 49670 goes to, I don't know, it's Cabois or Caboys Area Transit System for $35,000. I knew that that was a management agreement that we had been, but I thought that that was budgeted at 50 and I wasn't aware that it was, I guess, so something, something has changed between last budget cycle and today, so if you could bring us up to speed.
Certainly, be happy to. For several years, Talalaw has had a $35,000 support for Caboys for that. They provide the low-cost transportation service, which not only picks people up and delivers them in town, but also does commuting to Tulsa, takes individuals who are on Medicare to their medical appointments free of charge. Does a lot for the residents of the city and we've had that in place for a long time. I met with a person who is responsible for the transportation system early on and she had proposed some additional items for Talalaw, which included maybe fixed routes and an app so you could see where the bus was on that fixed route and possibly maybe some trolley system, something. So she was working on developing those and for that additional, it was going to take us up to the 50,000, right? So we had a letter requesting 50,000. In July, the finance department picked that up and posted the 50,000 as an accounts payable within our accounting system, but then held off and did not write the check. But because it reflected in our financial reports as having been paid, I dropped it off of where we were, had a discussion about how did something get paid and we moved on. Well, a month ago, I got a call from Caboys who said, "We haven't gotten anything from you this year." So we had a conversation again about the possible things that may come in the future, but went ahead and issued the check for the 35,000 that is our traditional. Now, I also had the opportunity to go to a meeting in Wagener where Caboys was talking about their services and Wagener signed up for low-cost transportation services about two years ago and their rate is 50,000, so don't tell anybody that we're getting it for
Off the record. Okay, so that, I mean, that clarifies it for me and I don't know, I mean, do we, what is the, what are the contract dates on, so is that something that was?
It is a fiscal year thing, so it is a June 1st, June 30th.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions on the finances? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this presentation.
Second. Do we have roll call? Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number six, presentation from the farmer's market. Marta, are you here?
I'm here. I'm just stuck behind this thing and couldn't see it.
Marta had shared some numbers with me via email and I asked her if she wouldn't mind sharing them with the council.
And I would love to. And I would love to.
They're actually good numbers.
Is the air conditioner showing here?
I'm beginning to think so.
Is anybody else cold? My number is cold. I got a minute, okay.
Yeah.
You're running it. No.
Okay, first of all, thank you for having us tonight. Good evening. What I've given you are numbers that we have collected of our market. I, we are the only ones in the state of Oklahoma that collects numbers like this, and I'm teaching other markets around the state how to do this, so that's kind of exciting. We had some, had some pretty good numbers this year. We had, if you go to the, well, the first page is our Saturday Market there at the Pavilion. And we averaged 18 vendors throughout the year, we averaged 618 peoples coming through every week, we averaged $4,091 in sales every week. We had $118,000 in sales. Next page, we attempted this thing called a Wednesday Market. Wednesday, from 4:00 to 7:00. It didn't work very well. It's too hot. It's just too hot. So, we won't be doing something like that, we'll be doing something else. But we had $5,386 in sales in those few, that month and a half that we tried it. Then we come down to our farm-to-school program, this is my favorite program. We went to all three of our elementaries this year. We impacted 218 children with healthy vegetables and information. There's one little special thing that I liked, that I talked about quite a bit, and that's that when we were at one of the markets, we put up our recipe cards, and we had one little girl that sat there and picked out two recipes, and she bought everything for those recipes at our farm-to-school program. Took them home, it was neat. Her teacher came back and told me something about it, and it was good. So, last year, we created, we have a contract with you, that we were supposed to supply $3,000 in free food to our community. So, at the very bottom of this second sheet, it shows you that in our senior program, we provided $3,502. In our double-up snack program, we provided $1,947. And in our veggie buck program, we supplied $2,533, coming up to a total of $7,982. I think we exceeded the $3,000. When we were at the farm-to-school program at Heritage, I am a native Chickasaw Indian, and the Chickasaw Nation TV brought their TV cameras, and they did a film, it's on our website, or it's on our Facebook page. And it's an interaction between me and the kids, and showing the kids, and it's just Future Rover Market. We have expanded our market board by two, we've gone from five board members to seven, and that's so that we can continue to grow. Next week, we have seven board members and management attending the Oklahoma State Yearly Farmer's Market Conference in Edmond. I will be the speaker for the fourth year in a row. Another thing that we're working on is our Future Farmer Initiative. We are seeing that farming is not such a big thing for the youth nowadays, and our farmers are getting older, and we're needing to get some new ones in. So, we have a new youth booth, and it will be sponsored by the Cherokee County Farm Bureau Women's Leadership Committee. So, we've got a sponsorship now, and we're working together, I'm hoping that we can get some youth in there. We're doing things like, if you, if your child has a little garden, and they have a couple of extra bags of tomatoes or something, they can bring them one time, sell them. That way, they get an experience of selling, of taking care of finances, of being around the public, and growing up as a farmer. And then, the last thing that we're working on is an online market, so that we can help people have fresh fruits and vegetables all year round, all week long. So, we open up April the 4th, come see us. Do you have any questions for me?
I love the detail on this, it's just the numbers are great. Marta, the one thing that threw me off here in the other category.
I don't know which one you're asking about.
Which one, the pig or the unicorn?
Either one.
Thank you.
The pig was a little pot-bellied pig that came to the market. This little pig actually made it onto Worldwide YouTube, he was the one who ran out across the highway, across Muskogee. Yeah, he came to our market, he's filled a lot.
So that little piggy did go to the market?
Yes, the little piggy, but there was lots of stuff, talk about that, the little piggy went to the market, wee-wee-wee, all the way home. And the other one was Unicorn, and that is a very precious story. That was a mother and her daughter, her autistic daughter, that she was trying to get to work with people, and so she put her in this unicorn suit, and had this little sign on the front that said, "Free hugs." And so, we have pictures on our Facebook, meet with the unicorn.
Wonderful story.
Can you hear the voices?
The little piggy says one, and somebody's part.
No, the little piggy still gets up out of that, from what I understand. Thank you very much.
We very much appreciate what you bring.
Thank you.
Item number seven, discussion of possible action to approve the lease agreement between the City of Talalqua and the Board of Cherokee County Commissioners regarding bike trail. Councilor Holmes?
Mayor, Councilor. As you know, we've been trying to get a bike park going, ran into fight with opposition, settled lawsuits, brought in about $225,000, so back into the offer by settling that. Anyway, we continue to look and expand, are looking for this, and we've had the opportunity now, by partnering with the Cherokee County Commissioners, on a 200-acre piece of property, continuous acres, beautiful, I think it's better than what we had lined up before, and I just think this is something that needs to be done in Talalqua.
I'll make a motion to approve this presentation.
Have a motion in second, any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir. Would you like to come to the podium, please?
Has this been a cost to the city, anything? Five bucks a year for 90 acres, cost quarter, $95?
Is it a budget item?
Well, actually, the city, I think, received over $500 for its leases of their property that they could utilize for this.
That would be to do a reallocation, to make sure they cover their sums on it.
Thank you very much. Are there other questions from the audience? No? A roll call, please. Councilor Holmes?
Yes.
Councilor Byers?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried. Yes, thank you. Item number eight, discussion of possible action to approve the final plat for South Ridge East Avenue, located near the southwest corner of the intersection of South Ridge Roads and Muskogee Avenue, Highway 62. More particular description as follows, and there follows the legal description.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilor. So, it's my privilege to present you this plat on south. We'll just jump right into it. What it is, the purpose for, are a restaurant and a hotel chain. Went through TAC, Technical Advisory Committee meetings, we had some comments, feedback, they addressed those, and then it went to Planning Commission as well, and they passed along a recommendation to approve contingent upon some of the final drainage study, which arrived Friday. So, our Thursday, excuse me. So, I wasn't really happy with the lack of time to review, but we were able to review it. It is stamped and engineered by Tanner Consulting. According to their summary, they do meet our regulations, they actually exceed them according to their study. They're to study a 10-year rain event and a 100-year rain event, and the discharge leaving the property has to be less than or equal to its present-day undeveloped discharge rate. And so, the engineer states that in a 10-year event, there will be 0.5% less discharge, and in a 100-year, it's 1.4% less discharge in the property. So, it does meet our minimum drainage requirements. There are some other issues that we were able to address through TAC. The adjacent property to the west has experienced some erosion, and the design is going to channelize on the western boundary of this platted property, which will actually provide a bypass through the platted property. All other rainfall that falls on the platted property will be detained. It's a shared detention between two parcels, there are two lots, one lot for the Brahms and one lot for the La Quinta. They did provide topographic survey, as required, and included it on their preliminary plat. In TAC, we were able to go through some utilities with TPWA, there, we made some changes. There was an existing easement that ran east-west along the La Quinta parcel that will be vacated. It was not an easement dedicated to the City of Talalqua, it was dedicated to the property and it's a service line for sewer. And so, they're going to relocate that down to the south of the structure. They were also able to reduce the run of the service line for electric, they were planning on coming north of the property, and now they're coming from the west, across the south edge. So, that's that red line that you see there. The developer's representative is here, and I'm sure would like to tell you some exciting stuff about it. They did provide site plans for both, excuse me, for the Brahms, there's the site plan for the Brahms, as required. And they are a little further along than the hotel, and there's the site plan for the hotel. And you can see that bottom block is where the detention is going to be, the south part of that block will be where the detention is located. You can see that better on the actual fine plat image, I'll get it there for you, kind of exciting. So, that's your detention reserve on the bottom of lot, is that one? Lot one, south end of lot one.
Clint, you said something about a bypass on the west side? What do you mean by a bypass?
A ditch, a channelized ditch, that carries the water that comes from south.
Up against that fence?
Mm-hmm. So, alleviate that erosion, get up there to that.
That'll be on the, on the east side of the fence, I guess?
Because the fence will stay, right? Yes, fence will stay, that's on the Brahms property. I thought I had that design page in here, I apologize, maybe it's in the topo.
Just for clarification, channelized ditch means one that is cement?
No, it is, Garshon, at La Quinta, is that going to be grass or?
It'd be a grass ditch.
Yeah. Garshon's the architect for the La Quinta and Brahms there. But, go ahead.
This may be, I guess this is related to, my main question is, do we know, is, will there be two Brahms, or will there be now one Brahms?
I can answer that. My understanding is there are going to be two, for us, so.
Well, then, my question is, how many rooms are there? Can the architect share that with us?
Yeah.
Or Scott?
Just please.
It was, it was, or it ain't.
Okay, that was my question, just to call back for that.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
No, yeah, that's for me, I think Scott must have right, it seems to speak with me.
Because we are anxious to ask the question.
Thank you. Could you bring up this one?
Yep.
I asked in your package, you've got these diagrams. And this one pretty well summarizes, this is a later project, a little unusual, because Brahms came in and said, "We don't buy undeveloped land, we want the plat files." And they in turn said, "Okay, here's what we want, we want a cross-access driveway with Casey's. We want to be able to do a driveway here to let this traffic flow between all." And then, here comes the hotel saying, "Oh, we have a sewer line running right through where our hotel's going to go, so could you ask Casey's to move the line?" And I walked out with all these notes going, "This is going to be tough." But, we basically accomplished it, so what we've got is, I'm here for John Nickel and Linda Box Baker, they're the actual owners of the property, and they're not really developers, so they kind of looked to me to help format the transactions, so this is literally an overlay of that plat. This is lot one, this is lot two. And in turn, then we go to Casey's, and Casey says, "Okay, we like our neighbor, we will do that." So, we created an excess agreement here, we have, Brahms was able to get a permit from ODOT, so this common driveway now to take care of this congestion off of this. And in turn, between the parties, Casey's has agreed to allow this sewer line to be terminated with construction of a new sewer line. So, all this, all this came to place, and in turn, Brahms says, "I don't want stormwater on me, and we put it over here." We met with the hotel builder and allocated enough property to create a stormwater detention. So, what happens is, we should be funds of Brahms first in about three and a half weeks. And in turn, we have money for the cross-access driveways, we have an agreement with Casey's and all the parties to have the excess, we're putting funds in and building this stormwater for both sites within the first 180 days, depending, so Brahms is coming on first, and it looks like everything's basically being together. So, I'm not really here for Brahms, or we have Garshon for the hotel, but I'm here for D and N, and usually, they want a plat file before closing. So, they'll be coming back to you with site plans, et cetera, but within your packets, these are the site plans essentially, and they was focused used by the stormwater people that are familiar. I challenged a stormwater engineer that we wanted less water, you have a vacant field, you have water runoff, we wanted less water coming after it was developed, and he did a great job, he did a 24-page report that I wish I would have taken more tissue in math class if he informed us, but it was quite an extensive report that I have available.
We have a pocket that went around here, you're right, I saw that page. Do you use that many letters in that?
Yeah, I know, it's like, oh, I wish I would have taken more tissue in, but he's allocated, and he's given coefficients that actually, once it's developed, will have less water coming out than what it has right now, so he did a very good job. Scott, is this?
Now, is this access here off of Highway 82?
Yes.
Does it go on down those to have access to the other remaining property?
Yeah. Um, John Nichol, they still own another six acres here. And so this will just be a grass area. But whoever would purchase this property adjoining would have the ability to build the driveway and tie it into this cross-access drive. That would be at their cost. But our agreement says if they did build it, then proportionally Brahms would, and they would share the cost for maintenance. And so we had the attorneys draft all the agreements. Finally got all the things to agree between the excess agreements. And they're in Brahms' hands right now. Should be signed. And it goes back to them.
Do we have the work footage of the Brahms?
Um, you know, I don't know.
Is it probably going to be similar to the format what they did in the SCOTY recently?
I would say so. And the other Brahms is sane. You know what that is, Clint? I was thinking 6,700 feet.
I can see that. Yeah.
Is it there?
This is one of the market.
Yeah, 6,059.
This is one of the market fresh type Brahms?
I think so. And Brahms will be back with their final plans. And they, before they can get building for this, et cetera, I'm just trying to get the plaque in front of them so that, so we can proceed on the close. So they ask if they should have representative government. I said, that'd be nice if you need it.
This is exciting. I'm surprised that makes it happen.
And the Brahms on Downey Street, I think they're going to refurbish that. I've really pressed hard to keep that one open. And so they feel like there's enough traffic to handle both. So I think, I think we can handle both.
Thank you. Dr. Uso, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. What's the thing about empty rooms? Someone said there's going to be empty rooms there. What's the mad, mad reason for that?
That has to do with the hotel, Motto, Tax, and the rebate that goes back to, or the incentive.
Okay, so they'll have the same thing as Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Yeah, for qualify on that tax incentive. And this is critical down from that. So yay. Now we're getting more rooms. We can, we want Talalquon to grow. We want conventions, et cetera. So I'm really excited that we have more. All it is, that's a part of it. It is a positive incentive.
I was.
Yes, we're not the people aware of the opportunity. But this would have been a help if it wasn't that incentive. So I think it's a good improvement. Hopefully we'll have a third one.
Any other questions? Thanks. Do we have a motion from anyone?
I'll make a motion there for a second.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Rattler?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Item number nine, discussion possible action to approve modifications to Part 12, Chapter 2, Section 12-243 and Section 12-263 in adherence to the process set forth in Part 12, Chapter 2, Section 12-263H. So long such modifications are compatible with needs to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public as it relates to the proposed construction located at 218 North Muskogee Avenue, more particularly described as follows with the legal description.
Nice to, that was my. So this is a first for me. And it was a first for the Planning Commission. And so it's going to be a first for you guys. Since, um, since I've been here, a new development, a new structure hasn't been built in the downtown quarter. The last one that I could think back to was the drainage. Everything else has been a retrofit, a remodel, some kind of reuse. And so this proposal is brand new. We have a vacant lot. There you can see it on your map. Some of you might be familiar with it. It's across from Workman's on Main Street. It is in between Dotson Financial Services and...
That's the old professional building.
The old professional building. I think Geesland's, um, south of Dotson Financial. So I think we all know where we're at. The small building to the south of my red lines, that's Dotson Financial. And that's the other half of this lot. So this is a half lot in that legal description, that Meritation, really. The north half of Lot 12. So Dotson's Financial is the south half of Lot 12. So their dimensions are the same as what's being proposed with this. This is the overhead, the site plan of that lot, the survey. I'll give you some of the stats. It's a 22 by 172 lot. And so you have a total of 3,784 square feet, which isn't too much. And it's not enough to meet our area regulations set forth in R3 zoning district, R3 multifamily dwelling zoning district. And how we got to that is C2 general commercial, which is what this parcel is zoned, refers you when you're doing, when you're building a dwelling to meet the area requirements in R3. So C2 tells you, hey, if you can't, if you're going to build a dwelling in the C2 district, you need to go to the R3 zone code and read the area regulations and follow those. Well, there, I've looked through them and I don't think they can meet any of them. And that's what the motion from Planning Commission was. Actually, I'll, I'll start with what it says. So that 12-263 page. So that's where it's taking us to R3. Performance with the area regulations in established districts. In those cases where a building be cited and performance of these area regulations would create a situation of general non-performance, the standards or norms as they relate to the setbacks of existing adjacent buildings zoned for a similar use. Then upon petition to the Planning and Zoning Commission and their recommendation to, and approval by the city council, these regulations may be modified in a manner that maintains consistency with the set norms and standards provided that such a modification are compatible, modifications are compatible, the need to protect. You think there'd be with the need to protect health, safety, and welfare of the public.
Sorry, is this an actionable item? I'm trying to process all this.
Yes.
Make sure how, how might I process this?
It's actionable. So what it's saying is, all these regulations that I'm scrolling through right here, these are your area regulations. These are your setbacks, your density requirements, your area requirements. So a single-family house, if they were going to build a single-family house here, they would have to have 6,000 square feet of area just to get started without some kind of action. We would deny their permanent application because they don't have enough square foot to even get started. And so I'll remind you that this lot has 3,784. So.
But it's also not a house.
It's not a house, but it is a dwelling. So the proposed, I'll just show you a little bit of the proposed images.
Not the bottom. The bottom's going to be?
There's an elevation right there. And so at the top, you have two apartments back on the east side of the building. And then in the first floor, it will be commercial space. My understanding at this point is they don't have a tenant.
Would it be a basement?
Excuse me?
Would it be a basement? Because that lot drops off real quick towards the back.
I think essentially the basement is going to be the retail commercial space. Is where the team are. You would go down and then you're in. So you're up here on Main Street. You're going to go down and then you're in the commercial space. If you can see from that elevation, that is the sidewalk. That is three quarters of the way down. You can see the.
As far as addressing ADA accessibility issues? Were there some discussion about that?
There, there was discussion about that. So the public occupancy part will be accessible from the rear for ADA accessibility, correct me if I'm wrong. And so the private dwelling upstairs, they will not be ADA accessible. Correct?
Correct. I did understand what you said.
So the apartments won't be ADA accessible, but the public retail or commercial spaces will be.
From the rear?
Correct.
So if you're coming into the commercial space from the street side, from Muskogee Avenue side, you would have to traverse upstairs.
So he wants you to approve something that's not ADA approved for the top. Is that correct?
Well, the commercial retail space, you would be able to access from the rear without any problem. That would be ADA accessible. The two apartments on top would not be ADA accessible.
What kind of question?
Yes, sir. Are, aren't businesses required to have parking for their employees off-street? Where are they going to park their?
That's what we're getting to. Like I said, all area regulations are going to need a modification, including parking. I was talking about lot size, setbacks, parking, all of those things. You're not going to be able to find too many lots downtown that provide that space to address all those things. The separation distances, the parking requirements. Those are all found in the area regulations that we're looking to modify. So we're essentially looking to modify all of them to allow for the development so long as we don't impact health and safety and welfare of the public.
Yes, sir.
You just said all businesses are supposed to have parking for their employees on the street?
Off-street. Off-street. I knew what you were saying. I didn't.
Off-street?
Especially the building.
So like behind the building or?
But there's a parking lot back there.
Right, but it's not there.
They don't know. It's only 22 feet wide. That's not two cars.
You can see that from the side.
So is there a list of all of the different things that the council would be waiving?
That's what all of these, I've provided in the status report.
But, but just the bullet point list?
All the area regulations.
Okay, but are those spelled out on a list somewhere or not?
I mean, they're listed F1, 2, 3, G1, 2, 3, 4, like that. And I don't, I don't, I haven't seen any that they can meet. And I believe that's what the motion in Planning Commission was, was modifications to all area regulations necessary to allow for the development so long as health, safety, and welfare of the public is not a problem.
So P and Z's supported this.
What about the water retention? Are they going to retain the water?
They're, they don't have to. They're platted before 2003, October 2003. Nobody has to before October 2003.
That is an issue because it is going to be pushing more water.
Well, it's already impervious surface right now. It's all hard surface. It's not grass. So it's all running on water. It's not generating impervious surface.
Were there any contingencies requested by Planning Commission?
Just that we don't impact health, safety, and welfare of the public. Big one.
So I, is, uh?
Please.
I think this is right.
Yeah. So the commercial piece will not be on Muskogee Avenue? The commercial piece will be around back?
The ADA accessibility will be in the rear. The commercial piece will be accessible. If you look at, hopefully everyone had this packet. And so the door on the south part accesses the existing staircase now, which will take you into the basement, I suppose. And then the door on the north part will access a hallway, which then gets to the two apartment units.
We did not get that, Jason. So we have teeny tiny version. Oh, beautiful. Thank you very much. This is very helpful.
The comment was they also have, Planning Commission could convert a stairway to a ramp, perhaps in the front end.
For the apartments going down to the basement.
Okay. Is that we have ADA compliance perhaps in the front of the avenue too? I don't know. We've talked about it. I have other pieces of the actual street probably getting covered up there, everything you might need. But that was a comment that you were changing from a stairwell to a ramp.
And I understood that to be for the apartments was kind of the difference there because we're looking at about probably an eight-foot grade change from street level to finished floor on the retail commercial part.
And on those studios, Jason, those are going to be long terminals? Or like the quote?
Uh, debatable. And so, yeah. Most likely short-term, but still open.
Okay. And did the fire marshal require sprinkler on this? Is that a part of this plan?
Yes, ma'am. And we've been to, we've been through TAC and met with all department heads. And yes, sprinkler system was required on this project.
Is that a hibachi grill? So if I, I mean, if I'm looking at this, if I'm looking at this right, Jason, is this, and you know, I mean, this is your gig. Now, I'm not trying to pick it apart. The, this picture here, so we're not, this picture here?
Yes, sir.
I mean, is this, to me, it looks like you're just going to use the existing, the existing wall that's there. So that, that will be, I mean, it's basically, you're not going to put any, you're not going to frame it up on the inside, no sheeting. I mean, it's just going to be the, because if I look at, you know, the next, the current site, I mean, that looks like that's the same.
That's correct.
So you're just going to basically cover the, can you, can you affix things to your neighbors? Is that?
Well, one of the walls is a party wall, which is the wall to the south, is the party wall. And then the wall to the north is actually encroaching about a foot onto this property. So there's some, some space there that we can use to do that. We've, we've since talked some about finishing the interior walls of this project just to get everything where it is.
I mean, this sounds, looks similar to what's going on down, further down Main Street. I mean, it's kind of like the Remedy Blue building is what I'm looking at here. You know, it's got the main entrance there, like Remedy Blue has the main entrance into the business. And then right to the side is that door. And it stares straight up to two locked apartments.
It's actually very common in town. It's just, as Clint said, I don't think any more, any of us have experienced a new build with something like this. So we're looking at Remedy Blue, the grill. It's got upstairs apartments, I believe six, with commercial space downstairs. You can kind of work through town. And Vivid has apartments upstairs, going all the way down. Trey Rattler of Insurance, I believe, has some commercial space downstairs and apartments upstairs. So it's very common, but the new build is something that we've not all seen.
So Jason, what about, I know like at Chicken Express, whenever they built, when they did a contract for parking with the Pizza Hut next door. Is that something, since it is such a narrow space and there's going to be a limit on how many cars can actually park behind that space? Have you guys looked into doing agreements with the neighbors?
It's not something that we've necessarily considered yet. If we, if we need to, we certainly can. You know, we're kind of dealt with this half lot. Previous leadership decided to split this lot and took the south half where Dotson Financial is. So we're left with the north half and it worked for Dotson. So we're hoping it can work for us in the future here with a waiver of these requirements. Our code just kind of backwards for this mixed use, even though it is very common in Talalquon. It sends us to R3 and then we don't line up with that. And so I think everything we've seen to this point has been commercial space that's later been remodeled into apartments and kind of a loophole there that got missed. And so we're coming at it as presented.
So are you actually touching the wall of Club FX? Or am I looking at that wrong?
No. No. So, we're between, I believe I have actual pictures.
Yeah, let me go back. You're right. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we've got a current site picture in there. And so, Dotson Financial, and this is, I believe, called the professional building.
On this piece?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a chance that water would pool in this neighborhood parking area? Or is that going to have to bring to it that we know it will drain?
Yeah, it does currently drain now, and so, we don't believe it will interfere with any drainage.
Do we have any handicap parking spaces downtown? I didn't seem to notice any anywhere.
Different topic, and I'll be glad to explain that.
Well, I was just thinking about handicap parking, you know, in reference to these buildings that we're talking about. This is at the bottom there. Would they have a handicap?
On Muskogee, it is not possible for us to meet the ADA specifications. So, it has to be offered from Muskogee.
I mean, I really think that this is a good use of the space. I mean, it's for a space this size, it seems like you're doing the best that you can do with it. You're putting a big space on the bottom, apartment space on top. I mean, it fits in with everything else that's there. And I just want to say everything. It fits with a lot of other things that are downtown. I mean, Croner and Bear, which is just down from there, we can see it, is the same type of thing. There's Croner in the front, apartments in the back. And then, like I said, we've got Remedy Blue down there. So, I think that if we weren't building a new building, if they were kind of coming at this, if the building were already there, what you're wanting to do, I mean, would fit, and you just retrofit the building and move on. And I think that for what you want to do here, I mean, I think that you're doing the best you can do with the, with the space that's there.
We do believe this is the highest and best use of this space.
A shot in the arm for some development downtown. Getting people to live down there and spend their money downtown. I think you're on the same block as the AT&amp;T Tower, though. We approve this, can make, can get, we can approve it on the condition that the AT&amp;T Tower comes down.
I like that contingency. I like that.
I think I've got a question for Clint here on the, on the parking, on the backside. Clint, is there, you know, if, if shown what, you know, what they own, which is basically all the way back, a straight shot back to the street, right? I mean, if, you know, as part of what Mr. Lander had asked, you know, is this, I mean, that's really the only place that I foresee any issues. If, you know, if you were to put up a fence, for example, all right? And so, you fence off your property, and now, that's designated for, you know, tenants or reserved parking. Or I mean, is that, is there enough, is that a scenario that you foresee running into as far as just the parking issue? I mean, I like the, I like the use of the space. I just question, you know, the back, the back, the back end, if it gets?
I think that at least we'll have to do the occupancy load and things like that, depending on what the build out is. But I foresee at least one of those two spots in the rear will have to be the handicap accessible spot. And so, you know, we had talked about the possibility of doubling them up, but there is a power pole right here in this corner. Right here is a power pole. So, it, we wouldn't want to create a conflict with that, trying to squeeze in too many cars back there.
Because that's not really just public parking per se. I mean, it's all privatized parking. Giesling's got theirs, and Denise Toyn and Club FX and so on and so forth. So, I mean, I guess, you know, that's all, that's all that you guys batted about.
Public access first, no? Public parking?
What is the, so on there, there's two parking spaces, and then, what's the square?
It's a dumpster enclosure, but we talked about that. And I think they're, I don't know if you have yet or not, but they've talked about working with their neighbors to see if there could be some joint-use dumpster like they've done on the other side of Muskogee Avenue.
What we'd like to offer is a shared dumpster, and we'll, we'll bear the expense of enclosing their dumpster and getting it in compliance.
Does, I mean, obviously, I'm not an expert or an engineer, but if you've got not, if the dumpster is not there, I mean, is there potential to put another row of parking?
That's, that was what I first looked at, but I just don't.
Or even to turn them the other way?
We're trying to protect the safety and welfare of the public. We're asking you to modify the rules. And so, I don't want to make it less safe by trying to crowd an extra two cars.
Ray, would you make it not running east and west and make the parking run north and south?
Well, then, one of the neighbor changes the way they use their property. Because then, you would have to enter through the neighbor's property. If they placed a fence, if they built a new building.
Because this, this looks to be deeper. I mean, this looks to be quite a bit deeper than Dotson. Is that right, Jason?
You can see the existing buildings outlined on the north and south parts. So, we'll be, yes, we'll be a little bit deeper than the others, yes.
Right there, right?
Yeah, that's correct. And then, you see the back of the other building on the north side.
The food, there's nothing in that professional building, is there?
I think there is.
The food pantry is, I think, in the back.
I've not been in there, but I believe it's there.
There's professional people in that building.
Food pantry is at the Presbyterian Church.
They used to be in the back?
You all sit around and talk about some of these buildings that are totally out of compliance with zoning and wondering, you know, how did they get there? What's going on, you know, and all that? And they might be only one or two items out of zoning. These people like two pages worth of variances on your zoning laws. You really need to think about, I mean, yeah, I'd like to see some kind of development there. But when you've got to do two pages of variances in your zoning, you need to seriously consider that.
That's why we're asking questions later. I mean, that's what we're trying to figure out, make sure we've, you know, covered everything. Of course, you can't necessarily cover everything, but as, as our comp plan, our 2040 comp plan talks specifically about stuff just like this, with infill and trying to utilize, you know, space closer to, you know, downtown, allowing, you know, residents and multi-use buildings. I mean, so, and in a situation like this, you're not, it doesn't matter if there's one variance or 37. You're, there's going to be at least one, you know, with a half lot on Main Street.
Yeah, but you're coming up with like parking, you know. The people that live there, where are they going to park? Where are their customers going to park? Where are their employees going to park? Two spots. I mean, you made, you made his dad come up with a heck of a plan out there, his new building, to cover his parking so that his parking lot was in compliance. This, this is a long ways from coming in compliance.
Well, this lot was platted in 1906. When this lot was platted. Versus, this lot was platted in 1906. So, it's a little bit different when, than what the bronze and the paint is.
I think it's very good on our comprehensive plan, on the recommendation.
Absolutely, code. Absolutely. Council Ratliff took the words out of my mouth. That is a direct recommendation in the comp plan is to move towards a form-based zoning code within the downtown corridors at a minimum because of situations like this, so.
You're not going to be able to understand any of this on video.
We need to not have so much conversation in the back, please.
Could you repeat everything you just said? Re-arrange, re-arrange.
Well, so, you know, Council Ratliff mentioned the comp plan. Council Ratliff mentioned the comp plan. It does, it speaks directly to the situation. It recommends a form-based zoning code. We're trying to use a square peg with a round hole in this situation. It's referring us to R3. That's, that's an apartment. Our code views that as an apartment complex. And all the regulations around it are trying to hem in an apartment complex and make that work. And it doesn't work for a mixed-use development in a downtown lot that was platted over 100 years ago. That's, it's not going to work. And that's why we do have to have these modifications if we want to see progress. Otherwise, we can tell these gentlemen to wait. We can adopt the comp plan. We can adopt a form-based zoning code overlay district for our downtown, and then, we can start going at it. But I wouldn't want to hold up development. I, I think we can work with this. You mentioned the sprinklers. That, for a second, I thought I was going to throw it off, but they didn't even blink. They were all about, let's do the sprinklers. Let's do whatever we have, have to do to protect life and safety. And so, I think that's the way everybody's going to work through this development is an eye on life and safety. You mentioned the drainage issue. That issue came up in the TAC. It was discussed. It was a concern that we had. You can see the stain on where it traditionally goes, and if you go put a building there. But it's on record, and we addressed it. It's not something that we can force them to go onto somebody else's property and alleviate that. But I think if it turns out in the end that it does cause a drainage problem, these guys are going to do the right thing, whether they're going to end up in a civil lawsuit with the neighbor that says, hey, you got to fix our drainage issue. The city told you to do that, or the city brought it to your attention. And so, it's those kind of things that I think we're going to have to work through this, like the parking. I wouldn't recommend if they said, hey, we're going to squeeze in four there right next to this. Guys, do you think that's a really good idea? Is that, do we have barricades around that pole? Are we going to have cars running into it? You know, I think the attention to detail on safety is going to go beyond what it is on others because we're having to work through it, live through it. Fire marshal, he's, he's going to be with, side-by-side with these guys the whole way. So, he had plenty of comments in TAC, and I think they're on their way to addressing them. This was the first one, because area regulations just could kill it right when the building apartment came in. We couldn't process it in further.
I will also just say that there's something noble about, they come to us and ask for this, rather than build the building, and then, after it's there, in the regulation as a built building, renovate it, apply it, other businesses have done throughout. Come to us with one idea and tell, get us to pass it that way. And then, when it's actually built and opened, it's not how it works, so.
Do we legally have to notify the neighbors? Are neighbors aware of where you're doing, Jason?
Some would.
Okay, define some would.
Whatever public information. We've had some conversations with the neighbor, and this property was purchased from Mr. Dotson.
Okay, so he's got some basic knowledge of the town.
So, I mean, what's the, what's the big negative here? I mean, parking, is that the, you know, is shared parking, parking? I mean, that's, and then, I think, I look at the front of the building, and you think, you know, financial services on one side. I mean, parking, to me, the issue is going to be competing with your, across the street with the, you know, with the ice cream folks. You know, I mean, that's, because I don't, I don't foresee, you know, if there's a restaurant, or a sandwich place, or internet cafe, or whatever. I mean, it seems like, you know, there should be, all of these downtown businesses continually compete for, you know, for parking space. But, you know, I personally would love to see something there as opposed to, as opposed to nothing in a brand-new structure. You know, I think would be great, so. Walkability.
I agree with Trey. I mean, if you don't do something to fill those lots, we're going to have, you know, like Masters Hardware literally collapse them in the downtown. And anybody who's ever gone through Muskogee lately, that's something they've also struggled with in their historic downtown district, is you have all these gaps, which they are turning into pocket parks, which are nice. But Clint would probably agree, you hit over six pocket parks, and it's kind of just, you can't cover it up anymore. You can't put a bayonet on it. What is it, put lipstick on it? You know, it's not much left to put lipstick on. So, I think, and I understand your, your point about making so many, accepting so many modifications. But I think we also need to save our downtown because we can all see what happens sometimes when downtown rots and dies in the center of town. It doesn't do well for the community as a whole, so. It's good to see creative ideas develop empty.
And this is not shipping, these are not shipping containers, correct?
That's correct. And you mentioned collapsing buildings. This building is completely structurally self-contained, so it does not depend on the buildings on either side for structural support.
I'm sure right-handers will be happy to hear that.
I'll make a motion to allow the listed variances.
The item line tells, make a motion. I know the planning commission had a tough time with the language of their motion.
I'd also just for record, have Ray make sure he says it's going to be the life safety that they're reporting. I'll draw it. And that's the main part of the modification.
I spoke length with Fire Marshal on this issue. He will work plans with me, ask me my opinion on it. He showed me the codes that he had found on it. He advised me the rights were very easy to get along with, very willing to please and meet what recommendations the Fire Marshal would be asking them. It is my opinion personally that this, that those, the ordinances codes are not a one-size-fit-all. And that's what this body is for, to allow variances, to keep things moving along in our community. So, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's a good fit for what it is. There's not much else that could be.
And there is just that one exit downstairs, one exit out the back. Is that right?
And one upstairs. There's an exterior staircase on the back as well.
For the apartment.
That's correct.
And then, one.
It is not uncommon to have a handicap accessible area that is specific, whether it be at the bottom or the top. You know, handicap, handicap access at the rear of the building. That's not uncommon anywhere.
That's Fire Marshal's deal anyways, right? I mean, that's, you guys are all over that.
The apartments themselves, if they're going to be at the top, they'll be required to the building code. Mark sure out and make sure that those things are there. And to have the correct width, the door downstairs, to go into mercantile or whatever business will be there, as long as there's handicap, handicap access to enter and ingress, digress, and we're good.
Thank you, Jason.
So, what that being?
Downtown a historic district?
No, our downtown is not designated as a historic district. We don't have a historic district, so it's just a viewpoint. Is that not correct?
Well, I did got three at one time. So, with our architectural facade, the preservation of historic districts is very important. And I don't know whether we're engaged here or not. I just know the projects that I worked on.
We're not.
We're not?
Make a motion to pre item nine.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
We're not going to add in, provided AT&amp;T won't. I will say this, though. I will say this, and this just comes from, you know, a background of being on Main Street. Jason, I know, you know, your brother, you know, your brothers helped in, as far as Main Street stuff. I just, I think that as far as the, if you guys will, and this isn't something, of course, that we're, at this point, have any, you know, enforcement of. But I think it's important, you know, to kind of keep the look and the feel, the look and the feel, you know, from Main Street of how it's presented. You know, I mean, of course, it's going to be hard to create a brand-new building to make it look old, but I don't have any doubt that you guys will try to maintain. I don't think, I think sheet metal is out of the question, kind of, you know, the old masters type. And then, so I guess what I'm saying is, you know, make it look good, baby. We think you'll be pleased.
If there are no further comments, a roll call, please.
Council Ratliff?
Yes.
Council Wong?
Yes.
Council Combs?
Yes.
Council Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 10. Discussion possible action to approve a fence up to 80 feet in heights behind the 25-foot building line at property located at 606 East Going Snake Street. More particularly described as follows to with lot 2. more particularly described as follows, to wit, block two, block six, Oak Park Edition, Cherokee County, Oklahoma.
So as you guys read in my staff report, I hope, the discussion that was had on the planning commission, we received a complaint about an eight-foot fence on Going Snake. So a phone enforcement officer went and checked it out, and sure enough, it was an eight-foot fence on Going Snake. So we posted the property. And the applicant appealed our decision to the planning commission. Probably should have taken it to the Board of Adjustments, but we took it to the planning commission because planning commission does have the authority to allow an eight-foot fence behind the front building line. So the typical front building line is twenty-five feet. This property... So I do have an image with the measurement tool from the edge of the road to the front of the house is twenty-five feet. And so the front building line is at the front of the house. Well, planning commission didn't have the authority to grant an eight-foot fence beyond the front, in the front yard. And so they decided to make the recommendation that to allow for an eight-foot fence behind the front building line. There was discussion about their options. And one of the options is to take, because it's two board of adjustments and request a special way variance of the front yard setback, the front building line setback. They are allowed a five yard, five-foot reduction by the code. So board of adjustments, in theory, could move their front building line to twenty feet rather than twenty-five feet, therefore allowing an eight-foot fence five feet beyond the front of the house. In theory. And so that's what was discussed. That's what the applicant's desire is. If you support the planning commission's recommendation of an eight-foot fence behind the front yard.
So you have measurements on what's in front, though, because this one's five foot, right?
One.
It's the front fence.
Yeah.
So it literally has to be modified no matter what.
It will have, because... Correct.
Do you talk to the applicant about that?
No, we'll get there. I mean, we, you guys, planning commission only had so much authority, board of adjustments only had so much. And so if they're successful with those, both of those appeals, then the applicant would have to decide what to do with the remainder of the fence that is in excess of the height required.
But just to, so the council sees, or can understand what's going on? Do you know how much fence is actually there in front of the building line right now?
I do.
So what was the purpose of this fence?
Privacy.
They just really, really, really want the neighbor's car. And they could look out there front window and see the neighbor's car with a little, two little parking lot.
Correct.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't impede vision from any intersection, though, does it?
It, I don't believe it's in the side triangle, if you will. You can pull out and see past it. Right here, there is a sidewalk off the page. And so there's, there's more room to pull out from.
Are these both rental or are they unoccupied?
I believe they're, I believe they're both unoccupied.
This lady said she undid that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
The applicant said.
On our packet on forty-two, you can get a better, like, bear and pull that, that picture there. Kind of like how the fence is, because that first picture kind of makes it seem like it goes right through the street. And overhead image. But this is...
It's in the package.
You're right.
Oh, it's in the bag? It really goes more toward sidewalk. And then, if you know how Going Snake is, it's got the sidewalk and then the big upper...
So it is a way from the street.
Right.
And again, tonight, that all the, all the before you is allowing up to eight foot behind. Basically where the fence is currently. What was that? All this before you tonight is if you want to allow up to eight foot behind where the current fence is.
That's all we're making a decision for.
Correct, correct. Because currently the code would only allow for her to build a six-foot fence behind this current fence if she chose to, which there's no, I think there's maybe a chain link or something. Or no, there's a six-foot back over, so.
Yeah, right there.
Back to the back corner. But she, the recommendation was to allow for up to eight foot, so she can put it in the back. As long as you have a before you tonight.
Okay, so would you recommend that our attorney do that?
It's up to you all, it's completely. That's what this board is for, for the councils to make those kind of decisions.
Well, I'll refer my...
What I'm saying, though, is the vibration.
The planning commission, okay, the planning commission is saying, okay, they're blessing it, okay.
I mean, in my mind, the back part of the property is less of an issue in my head than the front part, and the front part was kind of where I would...
Again, the front part is not before you today and it's been cited, apparently. So that's something I need to be dealt with another night.
Sure.
Well, yeah.
So basically the picture of the front fence is just like extra icing on the cake that we don't even need to think about right now.
Yes.
Well, that's how it got going in the process, but it's not... The only thing before you tonight is eight foot behind the building line.
So they want to build an eight-foot fence and cover up the windows?
I don't know, Keith. I think, I think that's...
No, this is my understanding, is let's say this pole right here lines up with the twenty-five-foot building line, this post. So they go to board of adjustments after you guys grant this. Board of adjustments says, all right, you can knock twenty, no, you can knock five feet off your front building line. So they'll be able to go to five feet. Rest will have to go unless it comes back to some, somewhere. But that's the process, is go to the planning commission, get the approval, go to board of adjustments, then she's going to go through that. And board of adjustments won't have to come back here. They'll make the final decision if they want to knock five feet off the fence. That'll be it, and she'll have five feet in front of her house.
Okay. Are, do we have eight-foot fences in other parts of town where people have done this in this fence?
Not in front.
Again, this is on the backyard here.
Okay, okay. Do we have other eight-foot backyard fences?
Yes.
So relatively common?
No.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just...
Is there anyone here who wants to speak?
I just have a question. Do you have the slide up there about four feet? What did that give reference to? I just, my eyes couldn't fix that fast. Is there some kind of regulation or something?
Yeah, if that's... In the front yard, it's only supposed to be four feet.
And in the front? Okay, up in the back fence.
Six feet.
Unless you have, unless you have a company acknowledging you that, right?
So here, you were in my minutes, you know. We're approved, trying to agree, the proof document is already done.
No, we get that. Nope. It will have to be modified, in my eyes. One way or another, what, what decision you make, if you grant the approval and BOA grants the approval, it'll still need to be modified.
Correct.
The fence is there, I'll be no bearing on what we're talking about. Other than you can see a representation of what eight feet would look like.
Graphic skills are starting to take off. That's what one would look like. Good eight foot fence.
It's a thorough discussion.
Oh, my God.
If not, would anyone care to make a motion?
Here, I'll go back to the item.
Somebody just did make a motion.
Trey, would you like to make it up?
Please, Trey, please.
So we're talking about...
Hey, I wouldn't make so much of it.
Oh, I hate to say this, but... So we're talking about the back of this house, where the fence is existing. So...
One's back in the picture. I got a point, so, because I can't hear this.
So we're talking about, we're talking about building a fence from here to here.
Negative.
We're talking about where this fence is, and building a fence. We're not, we're talking about this fence. So this fence will have to be modified. And so right now, here, here is approved by planning commission. They recommended from here back. It's okay, you can have, and all the way back. Are you running from this post all the way to back? So from this post all the way to here? Sure, yeah. And so while they're in there, and so if you grant that, the applicant's going to go to board of adjustments. And they're going to ask for this front building line, which lines up to the face of this building, the front of this building, twenty-five feet off the right of it. They're going to ask for a five yard, five-foot reduction. And so that's going to allow this fence to stay wherever five feet, five feet in front of the front of the house. It'll stay. Everything else would have to go.
Does that pin here?
I don't believe so.
At that point, too, just to clarify, I think she could go four foot in the front. I think she might taper from eight foot to four foot.
So do we know, is the intention just to do this side of the house? Just to do this side of the house where you're between the two halves of the eight feet? Counsel, I honestly don't think there's an intention, intention to go back towards backyard all. Based on the conversations at the planning commission.
Okay.
So tonight, though, I, I guess I should rephrase. Technically, you're saying for that...
Five-foot option.
Well, that first little chunk, you're saying that's where the building line is.
Wherever it is, wherever it lines up from the front of the house back is what she would be authorizing. So by your vote. And then she's going to take the next step of going to board of adjustments, reducing that twenty-five to twenty and getting an extra five feet if they grant it. And then, I don't know if there's any other options.
Then after that, just taper that forward.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Not roll call?
Counsel Wong?
Yes.
Counsel Holmes?
Yes.
Counsel Hires?
Yes.
Counsel Ratliff?
Interesting.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Item number eleven, discussion possible action to lift the moratorium to allow for exercise in removing more lifeguards in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Getting me there, getting me counselors, as we know, in a moratorium device. And Charles has reached out to me and said that time of year, if you'd like approval to be able to start advertising for lifeguards for the summer for the pool. You know, we still have lifeguards on duty, but we do not know if they'll be coming back or not. So this is an exercise we've done last year as well, so pretty common. The lifeguards, you know, they have set hourly rate of pay. But if we don't have enough lifeguards, they, you know, they can't operate the pool.
Second. Have a motion and second. Any discussion? Good way, roll call.
Counsel Holmes?
Yes.
Counsel Hires?
Yes.
Counsel Ratliff?
Yes.
Counsel Wong?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number twelve, discussion possible action to lift the moratorium and hire a patrolman in the police department.
Yes, I know at our last meeting, I was not here, I know Nate was there, talked a little bit about this position, getting the okay to recruit for this position. We come before you now, asking for approval to hire for this position. The, our recommendation is to hire, actually, it's a part-time police officer currently with the city of Talagul. He also was a dispatcher first, so he's kind of gone through the rings at the police department. His name is Forrest Elaine Cobb. And the recommendation is to, to bring him in as a patrolman one. That would be the beginning level for the patrolman per the bargaining agreement. And that would be effective February the eleventh of twenty. Do you guys have any questions?
I make a motion that we lift the moratorium to hire this patrolman at, whatever you just said. The recommendation's effective February eleventh.
Patrolman one.
Patrolman one per the evening bargaining agreement.
Second.
Did I get that right, Grant?
Yeah.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Hires?
Yes.
Counsel Ratliff?
Yes.
Counsel Wong?
Yes.
Counsel Holmes?
Yes.
Item number thirteen, discussion possible action to lift the moratorium and hire a dispatcher in the police department.
Again, kind of as stated earlier, I know Nate was there at the last meeting and presented this information in my absence, but of course, you know the need that he has at the police department. This position, actually, the candidate we'd like to offer the position to is currently a part-time employee with the city of Talagul, who has an interest in this position. Nate has done his due diligence and would like to offer this position to Gomero Almodó, starting out as a T one twelve, which is the, the grade. And he would start at the beginning salary, so it's thirteen thirty an hour. And this will be effective two eleven of twenty.
Second.
Motion and second.
Ray, does he have any caveats to that motion or...
Your board target only has to that.
A roll call, please. Counsel Ratliff?
Yes.
Counsel Wong?
Yes.
Counsel Holmes?
Yes.
Counsel Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, proposed executive session. Second. Motion and second. Roll call.
Counsel Wong?
Yes.
Counsel Holmes?
Yes.
Counsel Hires?
Yes.
Counsel Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So we have to have a motion to reconvene.
Don't move.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Do we have a roll call?
Counsel Holmes?
Yes.
Counsel Hires?
Yes.
Counsel Ratliff?
Yes.
Counsel Wong?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We are reconvening. Item number sixteen, discussion possible action related to the twenty-twenty-one contracts with IAFF Local four zero nine nine. Hearing no action. Item number seventeen, discussion possible action related to City of Talagul versus Spring Water Properties LLC, all Cherokee County, case number CB twenty eighteen forty-three.
There are motion and table.
Second. Do we have a roll call? Counsel Ratliff?
Yes.
Counsel Wong?
Yes.
Counsel Holmes?
Yes.
Counsel Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Mid-month special meeting, Monday is President's Day, so that would be Tuesday, the eighteenth. Out of work. And then the last item is adjournment.
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call.
Counsel Wong?
Yes.
Counsel Holmes?
Yes.
Counsel Hires?
Yes.
Counsel Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much for...